I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 20th, 2020 at 6:34 PM. On tonight's agenda, we have a regular consent agenda and monthly planning report from our county planner. And then we, our main item tonight is a public hearing regarding the Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis for the period from 2021 to 2041. A look ahead to, for 20 years to the number of housing units we expect to have and how or we will accommodate them. And so we're looking forward to that and becoming informed by a good report. And then we'll see what action we need to take at the end of the meeting. Tammy, if you'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Langston?
President.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
President.
Commissioner Malachi?
Here.
Commissioner Poole? Commissioner Poole?
There, sorry, it wouldn't unmute. I am here.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Air Milch?
Here. All right, we will open by approving the minutes of the September 15th, 2020 meeting. I hope the commissioners have all had an opportunity to look at those. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
I approve. Commissioner Williams approved the minutes of the last meeting.
All right, we've had a motion by Commissioner Williams. Is there a second?
Yes, Natalie Smith, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of our September 15 meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposed, the approval of the minutes passes unanimously and we move on to the report of our planner. Joy?
Hello. Would you like me to share my screen so that everyone sees the September 2020 monthly report?
Yes, please.
Okay, then bear with me for just a second. In September, there were no customer contacts at the counter. The Development Services Building Lobby that is, that serves building services, septic and planning, is open for limited hours and no one came to the lobby during the month of September. Please note that there was some closures due to the fires and the building being used as emergency operations. But there were no new contacts there. There were 56 phone calls or emails to customers in Gladstone. There were six building permits with land use review. There was one pre-application conference and one administrative decision. The pre-application conference was mandatory for an applicant who is considering applying for a conditional use permit for a potential daycare at a church on Glen Echo. The administrative permit was assigned for organ vacuums on 82nd Drive. The building permits included some that have been historically reviewed by the Planning Commission, including the ICSD building at 430 West Arlington and the tenant improvement that was required to prepare the shell building that was approved by the Planning Commission through Z079-19 at 735 West Clare and Dawn Street. The others were minor amendments.
Quick question?
Yes.
River Road is typically a shed, doesn't get a permit. Is this kind of a commercial or one of the auto dealers or something? Let me rephrase that. I see a permit there and it's just, I see the address and I was curious if that was one of our auto dealers or?
It was one of the manufactured home communities.
Okay, okay, just kind of curious what they were doing down there. Thank you.
If a shed is over a certain size, the building department requires a permit for safety. But it may also depend on the land use.
Thanks.
All right, are there any more questions for Joy about her report? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the planner's monthly report.
Commissioner Poole, I'll make a motion that we approve the monthly report.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Poole, seconded by Commissioner Malachi. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The report is approved. All right, we move on to the regular agenda, the main item, the City of Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis. Joy, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So the Planning Commission has had the benefit of receiving a presentation by Eco Northwest regarding the Housing Needs Analysis that was a draft. And it was a joint presentation with the City Council and the Planning Commission. Tonight, it was my understanding that it might be a public hearing. Am I correct, Chair Milch? Is this a public hearing on the Housing Needs Analysis? Or is this just a presentation on the draft Housing Needs Analysis?
Well, the agenda says that it is a public hearing. But I am not familiar with what level of notification was given to the public for this and what kinds of questions the public would be weighing in on. So I'm prepared to hear a report from you to engage the public that is in attendance tonight in whatever way, by having you or us answer questions or mostly to hear the concerns and comments of members of the public. But if our role is only to accept this report and make sure that it guides us in developing policy for housing over the next 20 years, I think that will be the focus of what we do tonight. Have you presented one of these in other settings and what has been the, what has been the purpose of the public involvement in those settings?
Joy, is part of the purpose of the tonight, and I'm not, I don't have the answer to that question, but I know that the Planning Commission will be holding a hearing in January. So I've assumed that this is partly to give the Planning Commission, with all due consideration for any public testimony you may receive, to give any counsel that it wants to give to the City Council. Is that a safe assumption, Joy?
That is my understanding. However, it was not a land use application and I did not send out notice. And so Chair Milch brings up a good question about whether any, whether the city administrator or yourself, John, provided notice and whether the public hearing is a public hearing through the Gladstone Municipal Code or if this is just another sharing of the report.
If I might, as this Jennifer from DLCD, can I jump in here for a second? And I apologize for how dark it looks behind me. I have all the lights on in my room on. But I guess it's just a very dark night out. Um, so it's my understanding that this would be not a public hearing, but it would be a work session. Because you're not looking at adoption, you're reviewing the information, you're making comments on it and it's not a final, it's not a final HNA Housing Needs Analysis. Also, if it was a public hearing for recommendation to the Planning Commission for adoption, there would have needed to be a post amendment notice filed with the Department of Land Conservation Development and one was not. And it would have to be 30 days before the first evidentiary hearing. So I think that this is not a public hearing, that it is a work session for comments from the Planning Commission as well as the public that's there tonight.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. That's very helpful. And John, your comment though is relevant too. Because in, as you indicated, there are two, at least two zoning related issues that we'll be looking at. Modifying our code to conform to some of the new regulations coming out of Salem regarding multifamily, small multifamily housing in some of our neighborhoods, which could be the way we meet some of these housing needs in the future. And second, dealing with the downtown revitalization plan. That amendment to our comprehensive plan, which made some recommendations for some possible zoning changes that have not yet been implemented, but could be in the future. I think we're scheduled to do that in January. So hearing this report tonight will definitely inform the direction we go on those two matters. So I think it's important for us to go ahead to treat it as a work session, as Jennifer said, and to, and invite include participation from the public that's here. So with that in mind, Joy, I turn it back over to you.
Okay. Thank you all for that. I did just receive a notice that my internet is unstable. So I apologize if you hear me cut in and out. So as a work session and with the understanding that many of you have heard this information multiple times, I would request that you feel free to ask any questions and you delve into the presentation while, while there is a slide in front that you have a question about. This, as, since this is not a public hearing and more of a work session, I would enjoy the discussion if you have anything to add or ask.
I'll chime in here. Lot of hard work here. I'm curious, because frankly, we're having an election soon and I don't make my decisions based on a potential election outcome. But the unknown is whether or not the metro measure will pass. And if it does, that would put the, the new bridge across the Clackamas, the pedestrian and bicycle bridge in the forefront. And part of our assumption here is that project's going to happen. And so I just bring that up because I understand we're dealing with density. I understand that the bridge or transportation isn't the subject this evening, but they're interrelated. And so I'm just curious about, you know, this thing is still somewhat of a moving target, I guess what I could say. I don't have any big aversion to anything here. I'm just making it clear that I think we're, you know, we got, it sounds like to go and I just want to know how much transportation and the parking and those aspects. So it looks like I maybe lost her, I lost her. Now my internet says I'm unstable. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, Chair, Mr. Poole, um, the Eco Northwest Housing Needs Analysis looks at residential development and looks at buildable land within the city limits of Gladstone. And development of the Trolley Bridge may impact some of our commercially zoned land. And you may see more conditional use applications for residential development in those commercially zoned lands. But tonight's Housing Needs Analysis really is focused on land that is currently zoned residential. And I, I don't, I was not planning on talking about the bridge. It's not part of this report.
And if I could, it's not so much about the bridges that as downtown redeveloped, it seems inevitable that we'll have mixed use, which means we're going to have density and it is likely a considerable increase in residential as downtown develops over the years. So that's really where I was coming from. But thank you.
And I, just to add, along the same line, something that's also relevant to the, to the result of the vote on the metro transportation project is the second major part of that that affects Gladstone is the proposed improvements to the McLaughlin Corridor for transportation. You know, more frequent buses, maybe a dedicated bus lane and things like that. And if we have improved public transit in that part of the city, that may influence where new housing goes in. Whether we could have housing projects closer to McLaughlin that, for people who rely more on, on improved public transit system, were that to happen. So I think you're right, Les. Both of these things indirectly will have an influence on, on future direction. But right now, it's kind of what land is available, how many houses do we need and how do we make it fit? So let's turn it back to Joy and, and hear on that.
I did want to, Commissioner Pat Smith, I did see you speaking when you were muted and you're unmuted.
Yeah, thank you. I'll learn how to operate this thing eventually, I hope. My question was, do you want us to hold questions until your presentation's done? Or would you prefer we jumped in at the appropriate time?
I think jumping in is just fine. And hearing about the, the desire to discuss the transportation improvements and the impact on the future housing is beneficial at the, the start of the presentation, but I most likely won't get into anything regarding that until the very end. So as I noted on a previous slide, Eco Northwest provided you with a presentation. That is essentially the same presentation you will be receiving tonight with more discussion. And the reason that the Housing Needs Analysis is being looked at goes back to the statewide planning goal 10 that relates to housing. And every community has a comprehensive plan that is supposed to guide development within that community and provide for the residents of that community. And in the Portland Metro area, it's especially important to look at the housing availability for the 20-year forecast to determine if there needs to be an increase in your, the boundaries of the city or if the housing to accommodate future growth will be addressed through code audits. With Gladstone being bordered by rivers, a lot of the housing that is needed for the future population will have to come through code amendments. But statewide planning goal 10 looks at housing and instructs that communities plan for the needed housing. Houseville 2003 specified when jurisdictions needed to look at the Housing Needs Analysis and adopt a Housing Needs Analysis. And so in 2019, there was a regional Housing Needs Analysis for Clackamas County and it included Gladstone. And that was used by Eco Northwest as the baseline for this update. So what you are seeing tonight and what you saw back in September is an update of a 2019 Housing Needs Analysis that will hopefully be adopted by City Council next year. So your role as a planning commission is to recommend or discuss any changes that you would like to see to the Housing Needs Analysis so that you can recommend adoption or approval of the Housing Needs Analysis. So the Housing Needs Analysis really helps Gladstone plan to accommodate for future growth. It looks at the buildable residential land and if there is enough space for the housing that the future growth will need. And it allows you to look at development patterns and see if it makes sense for the city itself. As I mentioned, the Housing Needs Analysis is a technical report that is prepared by Eco Northwest. And it goes through looking at the buildable lands inventory, the housing market, demographics and socioeconomic characteristics of the residents, housing affordability, forecasts of new housing and land sufficiency. All of that will be in the technical report, which will then be out there for public discussion and will guide changes to the zoning code and revisions to the comprehensive plan. It will also help guide the policies that are required by cities, including Gladstone, to address any deficiencies in housing. That was one of the pieces of Houseville 2003 that you need a Housing Needs Analysis, but you also need policies and strategies to develop that housing. This is one of my favorite diagrams from the regional housing needs analysis. And Eco Northwest included it in their presentation. And it really shows how the types of housing are changed and are impacted by a person's state in life. So as a family grows, they may need a larger house. As they age, they may not want a two-story house anymore with lots of rooms. They may want a smaller place that they can upkeep. As a single adult, you may want to live in an apartment that's affordable and close to where you work. So your, your state in life and your, your age can have an impact on the type of housing that you want or the type of housing that you can afford. So household composition, income and age are demographic pieces that are looked at when looking at housing.
Hey, Joy, a question that comes up. If I owned a piece of property in Gladstone and it was a decent sized property, I looked over this. If I wanted to build 17 new homes, what we're talking about at this point, just so that I understand, is we're talking about changing the zoning of that property to put in a multifamily home. Or not multifamily home, a multi, just an apartment complex because it would facilitate that needs. We're going, we're talking about changing of the zoning of somebody's existing property. Is that correct?
What we are talking about tonight is acknowledging the issues Gladstone has with meeting future housing needs and acknowledging that policies may have to change. And those policies may include rezoning of land to a higher density to facilitate the development of multifamily housing. So it may include rezoning your property. But as all of the changes to the comprehensive plan and the zoning map, ample public discussion is required for individual pieces to be rezoned. If it's a increase in density for commercial areas or single-family residential development, then it, it will also require ample public noticing and public discussion. So what we are talking about tonight is the, the foundation upon which decisions on increased density or increase, changing of zoning to increased density can be based on.
Thank you. I, I, the reason, I mean, this comes up because when we had, I think it was two meetings ago or whatever, we talked about what the state is requiring or going to require a 3% growth and this and that. And that's what, one thing that came into my mind is where are we going to find the property? How are we going to meet those requirements that the state is going to demand? And I just, I have not totally seen it in, that's where it's at.
And it, it may be individual property owners coming saying, I would like to rezone it. And the Planning Commission considering public testimony and public input on whether it's appropriate to rezone that particular parcel. Or it may be looking at an entire zoning district and saying, maybe we can increase this. Whereas John Southgate has mentioned, there was a housing audit that was done that has some recommendations on potential changes. And so tonight, we are looking at the base. So why is it that we're going to need to look at changing the zoning code? One of the reasons is we need additional housing units. Another reason is we may need additional different types of housing units. Because as the population changes in age or in socioeconomic status, then we may need a different type of housing. And so having this information will help guide that future change to the zoning code. And so Eco Northwest use the, the projections that you see on the screen here for the increase of, or the composition of Gladstone's population.
It's not just limited to changing the zones though, right? Because we are also adding ADUs and duplexes, things like that to existing zones.
Correct. Exactly. Thank you. And as we heard last month, there's a lot of housing in Gladstone that have multiple cars, multiple people working in them. And this, this screenshot here really shows how the analysis done by Eco Northwest included the fact that 36% of the, of Gladstone's households are non-family households, so roommates or one-person households. And so that is a large percentage of the population that may have multiple working individuals in it or may not have children, but are, are, are still residents of Gladstone.
And Joy?
Yes.
Going back to the, to the zoning change situation, that means that having a large number of areas that are zoned for single-family housing may mean, if that's the demographic we're looking at in the future of more single individuals, the single-family home may not be the option that works best for those people. So that could justify consideration of changing some single-family home zones to the kind that would accommodate smaller apartments for, for people living alone. But as Malachi pointed out too, the, the option of doing missing middle housing, triplexes, duplexes, quads in existing single-family homes may also provide another opportunity to do that. So it's a matter of whether individuals who own property think, I'd like to use this property to provide a slightly denser housing model here. Or whether we look at vast areas of property and say, let's look at "Let's look at this particular block or something else and change the zoning." So that's why we're here tonight, is kind of to be informed about all these trends and changes that might, you know, the way we did land forty years ago when our plan was adopted might need to be changed a little bit. Thank you.
Yes. And the data that you see in front of you is for 2012 to 2016. So this was the population of Gladstone at that time. The census data that comes out next year may help us understand if it has changed since then. And would we need to look at housing type in a slightly different way? But this is data that we have that can inform us prior to receiving the census data. Income is another aspect. So the age, the size and the household income can impact what a household can afford or what type of housing they would like. Maybe it's an ADU, maybe it's an apartment. But you can see here that Clackamas County median income was almost seventy thousand. Gladstone median income was about fifty-seven thousand. And so Gladstone is a little bit below the Clackamas County median income. But looking at Milwaukee and Oregon City and Wilsonville, it is not that far off from a housing or from an income perspective.
Do we know which city was missing above the Clackamas County line that would have offset that higher? Was it Westland or something?
Westland, Lake Osswego.
Yeah.
Happy Valley too.
Happy Valley was actually the highest.
Yes.
So we're surrounded.
Yeah, by communities that have higher income and lower income and about your level. And so it's an interest, housing is no longer insular. It's a regional issue. People move between the community that they live and the community that they work. And some of that is preferences for the type of housing and some of that is preferences on the community. And some of that is the housing cost. How much does it cost? And so here in front of you, there is a diagram showing the different housing costs. With Wilsonville being higher than Gladstone. And then Milwaukee and Oregon City being somewhere in between. The public hearing we had about the cost burden to renters is shown on this slide. With a thirty-four percent severely cost burden and twenty-eight percent cost burden. Spending up to sixty, a little over sixty percent of their income on housing. To be affordable housing, you are supposed to be able to afford your housing and utilities in thirty percent of your income or spend no more than thirty percent of your income on housing and utilities. If you're spending more than thirty percent of your income on housing and utilities, then you're burdened by the cost of that housing.
Joy, excuse me, so what I'm seeing here is that Gladstone is the most costly. Is that correct?
It has renters that are spending the highest percentage of their income on housing.
I think an interesting note here is, you know, because we look at this, we see that basically twice as many, or twice the percentage renters are cost burdened over homeowners.
Yeah.
And often rent is higher than homeownership, which I think is an interesting takeaway. Higher cost, I mean.
Higher monthly cost.
Yeah.
Interesting.
But not everyone can qualify for a loan or homeownership.
Yeah, I totally get that. I just meant in terms of the burden.
Yes.
I think the fact that the rent is costing more than homeownership is possibly causing part of that burden.
And I think another part of that is that renters very often stay renters. Homeowners are, you know, their monthly costs are generally going into the equity of the home and enable them to buy a bigger home later on. If you don't build that equity as a renter and if you're spending such a large percentage of your income on rent that you don't have any left to save to buy a home later, then you stay in that renter category for most of your life if your income is relatively low.
Joy, this is Commissioner Pat Smith. I don't have any reason to doubt any of these numbers. I'm sure they're accurate. But generally on something like this, there's a citation on where the numbers came from, or the figures, and I was wondering about the source for the numbers we're looking at tonight.
As I mentioned at the beginning, this was developed by ECO Northwest. And they, in their report that was part of your agenda packet, that was the executive summary, but the full report will have citations.
Thanks.
I think that is something like, I know this is a draft report. I think that is something I would like to see added to this, is the average cost next to each of these. What is the average cost of rent in Gladstone versus the average cost of rent in Westland?
I would like to see that as well. That's a good point, Malachi.
Yes, it is a good point.
So as I mentioned, there was a Regional Housing Needs Analysis that included Gladstone in 2019. And so this is an update and a finalization of that data. Part of the methodology, or the methodology started with gathering and assembling the data, then classifying the land, identifying constraints, identifying redevelopment potential, verifying that the data that they saw on the computer was correct, and then summarizing the results. And we will get into a little bit more of the classifying the land and identifying constraints in just a moment. This is how ECO Northwest identified the residential land that they were going to put through the buildable lands inventory. You'll notice that the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan has low-density and medium-density and high-density residential. And then there's the community commercial or C2, the general commercial and the local commercial. And then there's the industrial and the open space. And for the buildable lands inventory, they, ECO Northwest specifically looked at the residentially-zoned properties. And they classified the properties as either vacant, developed, exempt, or partially vacant. Partially vacant is an interesting one because it was deemed partially vacant if the lot size is 2.5 times the minimum lot size for the zoning district and the building value is less than three hundred thousand. So it is interesting as you look at the map of Gladstone. The green is the public or the exempt. The gray is the developed. The orange is the partially vacant. So that land that could be subdivided and developed further or upzoned. And then the red is the vacant. There is some vacant down near the river. And then the remaining parcels are scattered around.
I know we've seen a few versions of this map, but this is the easiest one to see out of all the ones we've seen so far.
It is a little bit more clear than this one, which really uses just the low-density, medium-density and high-density. And it can be difficult to see.
Now, part of the reason is that compared to the other one, you've removed land that had constraints of one kind or another.
The developed land was removed.
Okay. Oh, I see. I see there.
So the developed land is the gray that provides the contrast to the partially vacant and vacant.
All right. I just want to point out a couple of things on this map.
Yeah.
If you, if you look down, see where the little arrow is that's Thibault's Restaurant or that's the Cars Planet car place over there, a little sharp. If you look at that little yellow spot right below that arrow to the right, that's a house that's two doors away from mine. This is an R 7.2 zone, but the lot that that house sits on is about eighteen thousand square feet, which is a little over two and a half times the zoning size. There's a single house on it. It's owned by a young man who has some roommates, but he has a huge backyard that he uses for farming. It is potentially a place that could be subdivided into more lots and housing go in. But I know that individual has no intent of doing that right now. And that's the same for a lot of, I would imagine it's the same situation for a lot of these other little orange lots that you see or yellowish-orange. The very largest one, right in the center of the developed area, a little down to the left, right there. That is the property where developer Dennis Marsh has a home on High Street. And he has a lot of land around his home that he owns. I think it's at least a full acre that's part of his home. Potentially, that could be a cottage cluster housing development with several units. But right now, it's privately-owned land that belongs to someone who, to my knowledge, has no intent of turning it into future housing. So this, you know, this inclusion of partially vacant land doesn't mean that it's something that's out there and empty and just ready to go. These, for the most part, are pieces of property that belong to individuals who may live on part of them. And whether they ever become available to actually do some development is going to a lot be up to the owner of the property.
This is the church property that you all looked at in September. That is rezoned or will have 1.04 acres rezoned.
Parking.
For parking, yes. So you are absolutely right that the partially vacant or vacant property may never be developed into housing. But legally, Gladstone has to consider the buildable lands. And so this is the methodology that ECO Northwest utilized. Could it be developed in the future? Not that it will be, but could it be? So the unconstrained land that is buildable is on this one. But I wanted to make a note that there are parcels that have constraints in the floodplain. There, in that, that map that you liked with the contrast, there are parcels that have environmental constraints that keep it from being considered buildable because of floodplains or wetlands or steep slopes. Gladstone does have some slopes that are over twenty-five percent. All of these environmental constraints means that they are not included in the buildable lands inventory. Once ECO Northwest did the analysis and designated and removed the constrained lands, they determined that there are fourteen acres of buildable land in the low-density residential zoning or comprehensive plan designation and one acre of medium-density residential land. If you look at only the vacant lots, that is only one acre of vacant land that they found in the buildable lands inventory. The majority of the buildable land-
Will you say that one more time? That last, that, what you, the last thing you just said?
I'm gonna say it a slightly different way. The majority of the land identified as buildable land in the Housing Needs Analysis is partially vacant. Those properties that are, that may already have a house. And you'll see the fourteen acres that are partially vacant. And only one acre of the buildable lands in the low-density residential comprehensive plan designation is vacant.
Got it.
Do we know on the partially vacant lots, if any of those are actually not, if they don't have tenants, or are there tenants in all of it?
As staff reviewing the draft, we went, I went through every parcel. And the partially vacant have development on them. Some of them have development almost entirely across the lot, but it may not be residential development. It may be the garage and the driveway.
I understand it has buildings. The question is, are there people living on all of them? Or are there some of them that there are technically nobody living there, they're vacant, but there are buildings on them?
I don't know if there's a way, an easy, quick way to identify that without knocking on everyone's door.
Gotcha.
So I don't know how we would do that analysis.
Well, I would just add that, one thing I did here is just an exercise. You know, you pull up the aerial view of the city and you start looking at it. And you look at it with these questions in mind. And, you know, you find, oh, well, there's the wetland. And then you find, you know, different things there. But you start to see where, you know, some of the, of the medium residential, some are good size. But I think part of where we're going here is that that we understand that we have, regardless of how this applies to Gladstone, this exercise right here might apply to another community much more extensively. And regardless, we still need to do this because I don't see, this here isn't the solution. I mean, if we were talking about the solution, we'd be in real trouble. So I'm not trying to dismiss it. I'm trying to put it in perspective. Thanks.
So looking at the historical densities for how Gladstone has developed between 2000 and 2020, the density on the low-density residential comprehensive plan designation is 5.2 dwelling units per acre. The medium density is 8.9 dwelling units per acre. And the high density is 24.9 dwelling per acre. That is important because that is one of the aspects that allows them to determine what is the capacity that Gladstone has for building that land. So looking at the sixteen acres of vacant and partially vacant land, low-density, there is a potential for sixty-six dwelling units. Medium-density, there's a potential of ten dwelling units. High-density, there's no vacant land designated high-density. And so it's a question of, well, where are, how is Gladstone going to provide high-density development? Are they? How are you going to plan for the housing, or for the population increase that will require housing dwelling units in the next 20 years? So it is estimated that between 2021 and 2041, Gladstone will grow by 321 households.
I can't remember, but do you happen to know how many we, you know, households we currently have by chance?
It's on page 3-5 of the report.
Okay, I know I saw it somewhere.
To grow from 4,573 current households
Okay.
to 4,894 households. So 321 is, what, about 7% growth?
So looking at historic trends, most of the housing development was single-family development. Looking at the housing need, legally, we can't say that 70% of the housing will be multifamily dwelling units. So dispersing the housing between types, looking at historic trends and what is potential. The Housing Needs Analysis identifies that there will need to be 128 single-family detached units, 32 single-family attached units, 32 triplexes, quadplexes, or duplexes, and 128 multifamily units.
Joy, this is Commissioner Pat Smith. Where do ADUs fit into that matrix? Single-family?
Yes. And I say that because the, I don't know that it's necessarily in any one of these boxes, but because some of the ADUs would be the basement remodeled. Some of the ADUs may be attached to the single-family home. And so ADUs don't fit nicely into a box.
But we only allow them on the first two columns, if I recall, right?
Yes. And we will see when DLCD comes out with the model code related to House Bill 2001, if we will only allow them in the first two columns or if Gladstone will have to allow them in column three.
Thank you.
Looking at the incomes, we just heard about the extremely low-income individuals making between $20,000 and $22,000 a year for a family of four. There are 22% of the new households are estimated to be in that extremely low-income level. 16% of the households are anticipated to be between 30% and 50% of median family income. 21% are estimated to be between 80, or 50% and 80% of median family income. 18% are anticipated to be middle income. And 22% are estimated to be high income, making more than 120% of the median family income.
Now, this is Gladstone.
This is Gladstone.
Okay. Thank you.
If you were to look at the Regional Housing Needs Analysis, Clackamas County, it looks different. And Milwaukee, it looks different. And it's looking at the current population and the anticipated growth. So looking at what the deficit is of land, Gladstone has a deficit of land to accommodate 244 dwelling units. So how is Gladstone going to accommodate future growth? That is why House Bill 2003 requires that you consider strategies to provide for these 244 dwelling units. What strategies are there that Gladstone can use and are willing to use? There is the downtown revitalization plan. There's the mixed use in the downtown area. The commercial areas were not included in the buildable lands inventory. And so that 244 dwelling units that Gladstone has a deficit of land to accommodate could be accommodated if the downtown area is developed with mixed use or could be accommodated along the Gloughland. However, the guidelines for the buildable lands inventory really focuses on residentially-zoned land. And currently, to develop residential development on commercially-zoned land, it requires a conditional land use application. Looking at the Housing Code Audit of 2019 could help with the strategies and policies that will be utilized to meet the need for the additional 244 units. And then House Bill 2001 that was passed in 2019 provides Gladstone with time to review the model code developed by DLCD, which is anticipated to be out in December, and determine if that is what Gladstone is going to adopt or if you will modify it to meet your unique situation.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So you mentioned that the mixed use wouldn't be counted because it's not residential.
It would be counted for dwelling units to meet the future growth, but it was not counted as buildable land.
Right. So do we know if any existing mixed use would have been listed as partially vacant and has residential on it right now? It wouldn't have been included, right?
Not in the commercial areas, no.
So I brought that up earlier. I appreciate you clarifying that. And then I understand what we're doing here, even though we know there's some potential elsewhere. We can't count on that in our decision because it's not before us.
Hey, Joy, a question I have, and I maybe it's, I missed it or something. But in the event, we're gonna be missing on housing units, correct? We don't, are we required? I mean, just according to where it's going. Not, there's nothing really totally required, but to have X amount of single-family, whatever. What if, on a piece of property, the height regulation changed and you built a small high-rise? And I'm just using this in redundancy, or not redundancy, but in just making a point to accommodate the amount of places we need.
That could be something that the Planning Commission looks at. And John, do you, John, are you on the line still?
Yeah, sorry. I was muted. Could you repeat the question?
Was, was height, was removing the height limitation for development one of the things that was included in the Housing Code Audit?
I don't recall that being the case. I'm pretty sure, in fact, that the downtown plan, I realize you asked about the Housing Code Audit, but the downtown plan was sort of incorporated by reference in the Housing Code Audit. And they talked about increasing the allowed density and making other modifications to the downtown zoning code, but they did not talk about, at the time, increasing the height. Although I think that might be an issue on the table in the future that'll come before the Planning Commission. I also want to say, I meant to say this earlier. I didn't want to interrupt Joy's presentation. But just as a reminder, this is not your only chance, the Planning Commission's chance. Maybe I'm stating the obvious. This will come back before you when there's actually code changes proposed, both to look at implementing the downtown plan as well as the Housing Code Audit, as well as HB 2001. So this is a helpful discussion for me, probably for Joy as well. But this is sort of to whet our collective appetites. These are the things we'll be discussing sometime, I'd say in the first half of 2021, when a formal set of proposed zoning code changes come before you in the context of significant community engagement.
Regarding the revitalization plan, if I recall, the height limitation was different closer to the water than it was further away from the water.
You probably have a better memory than me. Actually, while you're talking, if Joy wants to keep going, I could pull up the downtown plan. I have it here, and I'll see if it actually refers to that, so.
I do have, I have a memory of that, too. Right now, downtown is one of the areas that doesn't just have a strict, you know, height requirement. It has an option that if, like a 35-foot height limit. But if you build, you could build an additional story above that if you have sprinkler system on the top floor, which means that potentially you could have four-story development in downtown right now. That's part of the code. When we did the study, the community felt that it would be better to have a flat limit and to take away that four-story option. Right now, we only see that option exercised, I think, at the hotel down near the Safeway Market at the east end of town. That's the only five-story structure that exists in Gladstone. But as we, as we look to this, certainly a change in building height requirements, as Darren suggested, would be one way that you could get more housing units on a specific piece of land, whether that's redevelopment of an existing one-story or two-story apartment complex into a three-story or four-story building. So that's something we'd have, you know, one of the other options we'd have to consider for this long-term, we're talking, you know, 20 years out, long-term growth strategy. You know, how do we accommodate the growth that we know is coming?
And I believe, I think one of the reasons I was engaged a couple of years ago by Jackie is I think Gladstone, stepping back from numbers and policy discussions, I think Gladstone has a real appeal. You know, you've seen what's happening in downtown Milwaukee. I think Gladstone could have some of the similar, I'll even say, opportunities where you'll have more shops and restaurants. It's gonna be a more walkable place. Commissioner Poole alluded to the fact that the proposed transportation funding measure includes improvements that would, I think, enhance downtown Gladstone. That may or may not pass, you know. But I think, even if it doesn't pass, I believe that eventually, if it doesn't pass, it'll take longer. But I think eventually, we will see that bridge rebuilt, and we will see Portland Avenue upgraded. I can tell you, having talked to for-profit and nonprofit developers a couple of years ago, I think to a person, they said, John, we're paying attention to Gladstone. If you can get the zoning code to align with what we need as developers, if you put in those improvements, we would love to develop quality, the sort of projects that we saw in the presentation earlier. So I'm really bullish on Gladstone. And needless to say, it has been done carefully and sensitively. That's why we need to really talk to the community writ large in consideration of these changes. But I think, I hope you share my excitement. I think Gladstone is just gonna be a really lovely, walkable downtown in not that distant of a future. Sorry for the speech.
It's always good to hear.
Yes.
So the next steps are to, to really do a rigorous community engagement. There is a community engagement strategy being developed now to build on earlier policy initiatives and to initiate and consider code changes. And so this will be where we're headed next year. And with that, I would like to end my presentation and open it up for questions or discussion.
Now that I'm able to see, you know, the names that we do have people outside the Planning Commission in attendance tonight, I would like to invite, because we did, because the description of this meeting online was that it was a public hearing, I want to give members of the public who came with that understanding to the opportunity to weigh in on what you've heard discussed already, what you're hearing, to ask any questions while we have our planner here. So let me invite any members of the community who are present, who would like to speak, to unmute your mic and go on video if you choose so that I'll know you're interested. And raise your hand, as like we did at the previous meeting, and then I can call on anyone.
There is also a way to raise your hand. If you open on the participants' window, you can raise your hand next to your name in the participants' window. Maybe not.
I just like to say, I think this has been very helpful and certainly challenging, looking forward with the question I had at the previous meeting about where we will build. It's, it certainly opens a lot of opportunities for rezoning and thoughtfully and carefully on the part of this committee. So thank you. Thank you, Joy. This has been very helpful to me.
Ellen, I'd like to say, too, thank you for the participation that you brought when we were doing our public hearing on the property on Webster Road. It is really helpful to hear from the public, folks who are sensitive to the need for diverse styles of housing and for the needs of the people who can't afford the types of housing that some people in the community can. So this is not just an exercise in getting numbers. It's also, in the context of the previous meeting we had, it's accommodating people whose income is not at the median level, but is well below. So we're not just talking about coming up with 300 housing units. We're talking about that a portion of those need to be for people with low income. And I think you were sensitive to that when you testified before. I appreciate that input.
I'm involved with the new Clackamas Land and Housing Coalition looking at the use of land that may be owned by nonprofits in the county, not necessarily the city of Gladstone, but in the county for housing that will accommodate people who have that need for low-income housing. You know, it's, if you think of a family living on $22,000 a year, that's, that's pretty, it's pretty mind-boggling.
Anyone else? Pat Smith? I see a light around your box, but I don't know if that indicates that you wanted to...
Just in observation right now, Chairman. Thank you.
I would actually like to...
I thought that was a halo.
So, in fact, let me, speaking of halo around Pat, I want to call attention, in case people don't know, Pat Smith and Ralph Mateel, a couple of our local residents, most of you probably know this, have put together a program to recruit some volunteers to help residents who are having difficulty keeping their property maintained to the level that our codes require, somebody who has overgrown weeds in their front yard. And I think I just want to give a shout out to Pat and Ralph for doing that. We spend a lot of time working on nuisance codes and other things and trying to keep that enforced. And some people... And some people, particularly right now during COVID, don't have the ability to maintain their properties to those standards. And I think going out and recruiting volunteers to do it is a great step for the city. And so I want to applaud Pat for doing that.
Well, thank you. Actually, the genesis of the project was Chief of Police John Spurward. And Ralph helped him with it. We've got four volunteers signed up. It doesn't have to be just, I believe I said it to all of us, it doesn't have to be just the planning commissioner. You've got a teenager around the house that you'd like to see be a little bit more active. Be a nice way to spend three or four hours. And I, I, I hope, we're, we're looking right now for a test piece of property. So if you know anyone who could use the help and for whatever reason may not ask on their own, we might speak to them and say, you know, we can get somebody in here to help you clean it up, so.
Pat, I volunteer mine.
Nice try, Darren.
So I did want to bring up one thing. So based on the conversation at the last meeting, you know how for each of our land use, you reach out to various city staff and departments? And based, I think it was Andrew who brought this up in our last meeting. I'm wondering if we should include traffic and safety on that list that we notify, so that we're not missing some of those concerns during the planning hearings, at least on the larger, on the larger things, which basically is what we're talking about here, right?
Malachi, I think what sometimes happens is we look at the standard, is a traffic study required? And that's about as far as we go. But I think having an understanding of some of the pedestrian issues or bike infrastructure issues that are inherent in a particular location would be very good. So I really like that idea. I know, you know, with the, the building going in on Webster, there's great bus access right outside the front door to go out of Gladstone. But when you come back on the same bus, you're on the opposite side of the street. And that's where having a safe crosswalk there would really help that building and perhaps the residents nearby. So that kind of dialogue back and forth would be really a helpful thing.
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple of thoughts. One of them is, I appreciate your comment about, just now about the new building. Unfortunately, we're not using till it's full, but someday we will. Crosswalk and walkability out front, and we've got a beautiful facility, and then we've got a no crosswalk barrier there. So that's one of those things we can work on. I don't want to get into the weeds of every street here, but I have a couple of follow-up thoughts about tonight's, just in general. One of them is, of course, the, the economy and land supply is going to, they're interrelated. So, you know, if folks keep moving this region the way they are, and Metro keeps the boundary as tight as they do, and Gladstone doesn't do any annexation, which I don't think was really discussed tonight, we can't discuss that. But the reality is, where are we going to put all these people? And the answer is, we've got a lot of R5 zoning that's going to end up accommodating them in the future, probably. So I know that right now, none of that is considered available, but that's exactly what people are looking. And it's not, it certainly, one doesn't need to think in a box about Gladstone, or take a tour of Selway and see the good, see the bad, and the in-between. In a way, that's what we're getting. And so with, with regards to this, this evening's information, this was very well presented. I mean, very, this is, this is a lot of meat and not a lot of potatoes. So I want to really express that I appreciate that. And that just really, you know, I guess I want to add, and that is, we heard a comment about changing codes and making Gladstone more appealing to developers. And that certainly needs to happen. But we need to be mindful, at what point is the quality of life? At what point are we accommodating developers, giving up too much? So it's going to be quite a mix. And again, I really liked the way this information presented, and I'm looking forward to, to this, going through the process.
Commissioner Poole, I'm seeing it, the same thing that you're saying, or you're seeing, but I also want to say that if we want Gladstone to be able to facilitate what is necessary to meet the demands and et cetera, we're going to have to do some give and take
Sure.
on making sure that the developers are taken care of, don't want them to take advantage of. But we definitely have to make it to where Gladstone can grow, we can develop our downtown, we can develop Portland Avenue, and it's going to take some push and shove. But we really, we can't alienate the people that are going to be putting the money in to this lovely community.
And, and I'll add to that, too. This study and the methodology identifies vacant land and partially vacant land. But what we don't really know and have a good feel for is, within some of our existing single-family zoning areas, the R5 zone, for example, Les, as you mentioned, maybe there are three 5,000-square-foot lots right adjacent to one another with homes that are, you know, really ready for a tear-down, that could potentially be a site of housing. And this, this study doesn't measure that. Now, that requires a lot more. Maybe there are individuals who have been buying up property and who know of several places that potentially could be redeveloped. About two years ago, this planning commission approved a triplex on a piece of land that happened to be much larger than the typical R5 lot. It had a very small house, and so it, it made sense to use that large plot of land to create three housing units where there once was one. I don't know how typical that is of this area. Maybe there are some more lots like that. But it's kind of discovering and knowing those, and then having, as you said, the quality of development that improves the character of the neighborhood, doesn't detract from it. And, and that's a challenging thing, but that's part of what we have to look at. I wanted to mention one other thing. I appreciate in a report like this, the research they do, the sort of sociological research on the changing trends in housing, you know, the average size of the occupants of, of a home. You know, it's down to like just a little over three people on average, where decades ago, homes accommodated much larger families. There's also a trend toward people wanting more multi-generational families, which is one way, one place where the ADUs come in. But so much has changed just this year. There was, you know, I wonder what COVID's long-term implications are going to be for the way people work. Are we going to see many more people working from home, as they're doing now, and not leaving their homes and clogging the roads? And, you know, I, I have to think even that, I'm not taking the position one way or the other, but a lot of people were thinking, I'd like to kind of take a wait-and-see attitude on this metro transportation thing, because maybe we are trying to design our transportation system for a world that will no longer exist after COVID. Maybe things will change substantially. And I think that's, you know, that's something we need to think of in terms of housing as well. You know, we, one of our city council candidates has suggested having, you know, a, a good fiber optic internet system in our city. Maybe some cities will, will spend more time on figuring out how people can commute from their homes than drive from their homes to jobs. So all of those factors, I think, come into play in designing a comprehensive look at housing for the future. Is it going to be the way it's always been? Probably not. And we need to take those factors into consideration as well.
Chairman Milch, I believe you mentioned ADU, a couple of other people have also. We have what, my own personal opinion, we have a hurricane regulation as, as to size on ADUs here, which we've discussed before. And I'm wondering, at what point will we have, will we take that under consideration to increase the size of an ADU from 400 square feet?
I don't have it on the agenda right now. Some of us participated in a, an online webinar about ADU regulations. Was it last week or a couple of days ago? And now I can't remember. Portland has made some, has really liberalized some of their recommendations there, and that may help us, you know, in deciding what to do. I don't have a specific schedule for that. I don't know if it'd be better to do it in connection with trying to come into compliance with the duplex, triplex, quadplex regulations, the model codes that are coming down to us. But I know that there's demand right now. There are people that are interested in doing this. We've heard from some of them at our meetings. So we reviewed the Oregon City Codes, which we thought would, would be an improvement over what we have now. I think there was consensus among this council, this commission, that, that the 400-square-foot maximum was much too small, that 800 square feet and some proportion of the home size, and allowing a full development of a basement, as they have in Oregon City, was probably more along the lines of what we'd want to do. But having heard the complexity of the codes in Portland, we also need to think about, would you allow ADUs in a duplex? Would you allow more than one detached ADUs on one piece of property? That's some of the things they're doing there as far as their residential infill project. And I don't know if we want to go that far very quickly, but we could at least take the incremental step of getting the size regulations more in line with what people seem to want.
I have another question, too, if Joy is still with us. On this, our booklet tonight on page 3-29, there's a section in there on mobile home parks. Apparently, we have a couple of them here in Gladstone that has 99 residents in them. I'm personally aware of a couple of those in Clackamas County, not in Gladstone, where the property's been sold out from under the homeowners, and they've been forced to move their mobile homes. Those seem to be on the lower end of the income spectrum in terms of housing, and it seems to be the target that we're aimed at. So I'm wondering if there's any kind of consideration for protection for those two pieces of property?
I don't know how their numbers break down, but one of the main mobile home communities in our city did change to, to being a co-op. It is owned by the residents. So that concern has been addressed. And one of the great things about it is, well, I'll let Jackie answer this question, because Jackie came prepared tonight to talk a little bit about the, is it Two Rivers? Is that the name of it? Jackie, what you, can you answer Pat's question?
Well, yeah, thank you guys for asking about that, because this is another great success story. Earlier in the night, you had Julie that was talking about redevelopment on a site where it used to be a mobile home park. In Gladstone, the homeowners and renters kind of took things into their own hands. And in 2016, Two Rivers Homeowners Cooperative was formed, and they purchased their 142-space mobile home park. They secured a bridge loan from CASA, which is the Community and Shelter Assistance Corporation of Oregon and the Network for Affordable Housing, to purchase the park before the owner sold it to someone else, because that's exactly what Commissioner Smith said they were concerned about happening to them, and they would have been out of a home. So they took it into their own hands, they became a cooperative, and they also just completed permanent financing to rebuild their water and their sewer infrastructure. So the park was built in 1960s, they secured about $1.6 million loan. And as of this week, of today, I believe they're finishing paving in there. And I think it'd be great for all of us to go take a tour of when it's, it's finished, because this is an example of a 55-plus community that kind of said, let's take care of ourselves. And now they have ownership in it, and now their infrastructure is being replaced. And we're even able to provide them a way that they can participate in the annual low-income utility billing qualification system that ensures confidentiality and a fair comparison to city residents, while providing an equitable reduction to the park. So that is a very good story, and I'm glad that Commissioner Milch asked for an update on that, because I think yesterday was when they finished their paving.
All right.
I would love to take a tour of that.
I've gone through there a couple of times and watched the progress. I was aware of how they got there. I was coincidentally involved in Wilsonville. You drive by on I-5 there, near Beckman Road, and you see all the beautiful new condos. Well, prior times, that was, of course, the Thunderbird Mobile Park, over 300 units. And when that closed years ago, I helped relocate some folks' homes. But as a result of that, the state did pass a law so that the landlord does provide some compensation or some seed money for those that have to move. And what's really tragic is, you know, sometimes you think, well, a simple wide mobile home isn't that much, but it's plenty for a lot of folks. And when you lose that, you're losing an affordable housing unit. I mean, you know, they're, they're the original affordable housing, and there's still a place for them. So that's good news. Thank you, Jackie.
I would like to see if Andrew has something to add. Earlier, it looked like he may have a comment.
Oh, thank you. I have an echo on my end. I'm sorry. Sorry, folks. I'm not sure why that's happening.
Could other people mute their microphones? We might be getting some feedback through somebody's speaker.
Rather daunting. At least on my end. No, I. Hi. Transportation, thank you for bringing it up and talking about it. These things matter, and I feel sometimes, and, and thank you for the idea of inviting traffic safety more to the board with these issues. I'm realizing more and more with my time with the board, oftentimes, things are happening and people will come to us and be like, what's going on? Really? Oh, we don't know. So we, it's really important that we stay in tune with certainly the planning board, because you guys are really, you know, leading the city. A lot of these issues and transportation, I feel like sometimes not necessarily gets overlooked, but is easy to, you know, put to the side. And I want to make sure that we're considering pedestrian safety, quite simply, when we talk about developing Gladstone. Thank you.
Well, I wonder if any other commissioners or members of the public want to weigh in. I know a lot of you were here for an extra meeting, an hour early, so we've been here for a while. This is a very helpful report. It will guide us, not just through the numbers, I think, but also a consideration of the, the, the real human face to this whole project, the recognition that not everyone has the same income level, not everyone has the same housing needs and desires, and that providing a diverse range of housing options for people is very consistent with what Gladstone has always felt about what housing should be. I do want to, I'll make one recommendation. Well, listen, no, let me, let me just go ahead and, let me see if there's anybody else, and then I'll move to reports from individual commissioners. Yes, Darren?
Hey, excuse me, where was that manufactured home park?
It's on River Road, or in the River Road area, west of McLaughlin. So it's, you know where the, the stretch of.
Going down, going down to the park?
Yeah, between the river and McLaughlin, at the south end of River Road.
I think that, that, what a great story. That just, that's excellent. Love it. Thank you.
Just think, just think if we had neighborhoods in Gladstone that where, where the residents were getting together to pay for financing of their own water and sewer infrastructure. Wouldn't that make a big difference? All right. Well, thank you, Joy, for your presentation. Let's move on to councilors and hear. and hear from any individual business, I keep saying councilors, commissioners, any individual business from commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Langston. Do you have anything?
I don't have any new business, but I just want to say thank you to everybody who presented tonight. It was great information and I really appreciate their time and efforts.
Thank you. Commissioner Natalie Smith?
I don't have anything at this time, but again, I want to echo that this, the study was phenomenal. It was great. Lot of, lot of hard work in that. And thank you very much.
Malachi?
Yeah, so I just want to remind people that if they are interested in being on the planning commission, that there will be a new round, that make sure you get your applications in for the January. Is that right, Jackie?
Yes. And in fact, the first week in November, we will be launching our social media campaign, encouraging people to apply. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, Commissioner Poole? You're on mute.
I forgot I muted when we were getting that background. Obviously, we're all driving by and spotting that new building going up at Clarence, real close to going to be a nice addition to the community. And that's a story of perseverance. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Les. Commissioner Pat Smith? No, no, Commissioner William, sorry. I'm going in the wrong order.
No, thank you. Good meeting. I enjoyed. And Gladstone has a lot to figure out because the challenges are magnified and getting, getting more because it's going to grow. And it's a very potentially, I mean, it is, but really potentially prospering city to be.
I think back to 40 years ago, when our comprehensive plan was developed and it came on the heels of several decades where the population of Gladstone would grow between 50 and 60% per decade. And from the year 2000 to the year 2010, the population of Gladstone grew by something like 59 people. We really stopped there, that growth. It may have had to do with some zoning changes we made early in that decade. I don't know. But looking ahead to the future, I'm grateful for those people 40 years ago who put the work in. There aren't too many of them left in town who put the work in to develop a full comprehensive plan. But amending it and keeping it updated and looking ahead to future housing needs is a real challenge. So I'm thankful, grateful to all of you who are going to be part of that process and to the community who will be heavily engaged in that process. Now, Commissioner Pat Smith?
I have a historical question. The first meeting I attended was on about a 60-inch development off of Abernathy owned by a man named Casey Cudding. And it was set aside for a number of reasons at the time. And I just wondered if anyone's aware of the current status of that.
Based on the report that we had tonight, I believe that it is zoned multifamily, but it is within that land that is identified as constrained. So I think a determination was made about the wetlands status of that piece of property. Actually, that study was done in connection with the renovation work that was done on the River Glen Apartments that are on the south side of that same wetlands area. So the owner of that property was hesitant to do a wetlands delineation study, but the owner of the apartments did it. Joy, is that, is that your, does that reflect your memory? That may have been something that Clay Glasgow was originally involved in that project. And then I don't know if Melissa was involved in between.
Clay has mentioned it to me. It is one that may come up again, but I have not heard anything from the property owner. I have not received any applications. There was a wetland delineation, to my knowledge, if I remember correctly. But I don't know that it was on the parcel or if it was primarily on the adjacent parcel. And so there is a question of how extensive the wetland was on that parcel.
So if it were to come up to us again, it might be that a different configuration of development on that land might still be possible, depending on what the results of the delineation were. But we won't know that until it comes up to us again.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. The only thing, other thing I want to add, I made the comment about the trends in housing and how things are changing so much because of COVID and the changes in the economy and other things. I picked up a new book the other day at Powell's. I'll hold it up to the camera. It's called Brave New Home. And the author is Diana Lind. And she's talking about that very issue. It was just published earlier this month, so it does even have reference to the economic and health impacts of COVID and the way we live and what that says for housing and whether single-family housing or alternatives are the way of the future. Her position is, single-family housing no longer meets the needs of many in our population. And our long emphasis on that is the style, you know, of what we mostly do, may be kind of coming to an end. So I commend it to you. I've been trying to read it and incorporate it into my way of thinking about these issues. And so Brave New Home. Okay, well, if there's no other business to come before us tonight, I will entertain
I have one, I have one thing I'd like to say.
Yes, Natalie.
Here, Milch. I just wanted to share with everybody, I don't know who all attended last week's city council meeting, but a lot of our long meetings and hard work, a lot of things went before city council and they were all approved. So we did a good job.
Thank you for reminding me of that. And we not only did a good job, but Joy, once again, had the, you know, the opportunity or the responsibility to present them to the council in a way that they could act on them. And the council asked good questions, put together all the motions that they needed to do and got through the agenda. And so the, some of the zoning code changes that we did, the change, the zoning change on the apartment parking were all accomplished in that meeting. So thank you, Joy. Thank you, city council. And thank you, Natalie, for reminding. All right, I will entertain. John Southgate, thank you very much for your attendance and participation in both these meetings tonight. You have been a great asset to our city in looking at these things. I don't know how we did it without you in the past. So thank you, John. All right. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I moved and we adjourned.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. The Smiths have moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.